Good evening, calling us back to order. 4.1, Pledge of Allegiance. How everyone stand please? Item 4.2, Broadcast Statement.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will be aired Saturday, January 20th at 1:00 p.m. and Monday, January 22nd at 12:00 p.m. It is also a webcast at metro14live.saccounty.net and can be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form which are located in the back of the room and give them to our communications representative along with any handouts you may have for the board prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is listed on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also either turn off your cellphones or place them on silent mode.
Thank you. Item 4.3, Stellar Student, introduced by Board Member Kaata.
Okay, so tonight's stellar student comes from our Alice Burney TK to 8 Public Waldorf School, which is an amazing school in our district, a unique school in our district that a lot of school districts don't have, and I'm really pleased to be able to present a student from this great school. Our stellar student today is Anna Bossi, and you can come up to the microphone now. We'll clap. So Anna is currently a 7th grade student at Alice Burney. Anna started as a kindergarten student and is a cornerstone of Ms. Snyder's class, and Ms. Snyder is here as well, we'll ask you to come up later. Anna has traveled through the grades with the same group of students and teachers since 1st grade, which is a part of the Waldorf model. Although she struggled in the past with fine motor skills and coordination, Anna's perseverance has allowed her to blossom into a prolific artist with drawings and paintings that she creates to add beautiful pages for her main lesson book, which is the tech book students create at their learning. Anna also plays the recorder, violin, and guitar, and sings beautifully. Anna is exceptionally athletic and runs with stamina and grace daily with her class. Anna is an eloquent public speaker, gives incredible presentations on history projects, and is a talented actress in her class plays. Her writing is outstanding, and she is able to articulate ideas with a rich vocabulary. She participates fully in math and science classes with incredible focus and consistently offers helpful contributions. Anna is a stellar student and has received all As on her first quarter report card. Besides being a well-rounded young woman, Anna is a gracious friend, serves her community generously, and is loving and kind. Anna Bossi shines brightly as a stellar student at Alice Burney. And Anna, if you have a few words, you're welcome to share them now.
Thank you so much for this honor. I was very surprised to receive it, and I'm very grateful to Mr. Kaata and all the members of the board. I think that Alice Burney is definitely a very good school, and part of the reason why I'm able to do well at Alice Burney is because of my wonderful teachers and principal, and my teacher, Ms. Snyder, and amazing principal, Ms. Horning. And I really enjoy school every day, thanks to them and to all the teachers at the school. And I always enjoy the classes and the curriculum, and I'm very grateful to be here today and to get this honor. And so thank you to all the members of the board and to my parents and grandparents, and especially everyone at Alice Burney. It's an amazing honor, and I'm very, very thankful to everyone who made it happen. And thank you for the opportunity, and I'm very, very, very glad to get this honor.
Thank you very much.
So, I don't know if Anna's parents, teacher, and principal are here, if you all wanted to say anything. Otherwise, let's all come up to the microphone. Sorry, is that your part?
So, as Member Kaata said, we're all going to come up and take a picture in the front. Where is the...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
What high school are you going to go to, do you know?
I'm not sure, but maybe West Campus, South Waldorf.
That's great.
In my mind, I think it's going to be...
Well done.
Aww.
Where's your dad?
Taylor, do you want in here in the front? Yeah.
I'm always in the back.
There you go.
There you go.
Item number 5, Announcement of Action Taken in Closed Session.
Good evening, President Phillips. There are no announcements coming out of closed session this evening.
Thank you very much. Item 6, Agenda Adoption. Agenda adoption. So moved by Member Villa, seconded by Member Rhodes. Is that a...all in favor? All in favor. I'll get that. Motion passes. Item 7, Public Comment.
President Phillips, we have, I believe, 11 cards tonight. We'll begin with Devon, pardon me, Devon Summerhousen, followed by Justine Chu Griffith.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Devon Summerhousen. My pronouns are she, they, and I'm a transgender 12th grade student at West Campus High School. I come to you today with a problem that I've wanted to address for many years. The treatment of transgender and gender non-conforming students at West Campus is unacceptable. For years, myself, my mother, and multiple other people I know personally have been told by office officials, specifically school registrar Katie Nobita, that we are unable to change our names in school documents, including Infinite Campus, emails, school paperwork, and even the yearbook. She has claimed it is necessary to seek a legal name change, which according to board policy, 5145.31 is untrue, and the refusal of respecting and allowing a student to change their name in the system is listed as a possible form of discrimination or harassment. Yearbooks especially have their own designation that specifies it is not a legal document. Therefore, a name change should be honored. Recently, a student who chose to remain anonymous approached office staff requesting a name change. The student was denied such name change at first, and after a difficult process, they were able to get their name in Infinite Campus in parentheses next to their legal name. Following this change, the West Campus representative for the Student Support Center, Ms. Patricia Bernal, called said student's parents without requesting permission from the student or informing them at all on a holiday. She informed them of this change and put that student in danger and at risk of problems with their family. This is also a clear breach and district policy of student privacy and safety and is also truly unacceptable. I was able to go around these officials and get my personal name changed after two years of hard work, but a large number of students have gone to the office and been turned down. This continual policy is a disgrace to students at West Campus, which prides itself on forward thinking while continually proving this is not truly a value of the school. This is not even the end of the disrespect trans students face at West Campus, and we are sick of it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Devon.
Hello, my name is Justine Chu Griffith. I am a West Campus student, and I am here on behalf of our school's Gender Sexuality Alliance. Over the past few years, LGBTQ+ students, and specifically transgender, queer, and gender non-conforming students, have been put at risk across the country. In California alone, multiple school districts have passed or proposed anti-trans policies. Chino Valley, Orange County, and Rockland have introduced policies that require gender queer and trans students to be outed to their parents by schools. Trans youth across the state are being put in direct danger by the very institutions that should be their safe spaces. Although SCUSD has not proposed such policies, it is still a scary time to be a queer student in America. We at GSA have seen our friends, our peers, and our community hurt by these policies and refuse to sit back and watch it happen. I'd like to ask the board to do what other boards have failed to do: protect trans students. Specifically, schools need to take active precautions and make conscious efforts to ensure that students can express themselves freely and safely at school, without the fear of this freedom costing them a safe home life. Every student in this district is entitled to an education that allows them to express themselves openly. However, not all students will receive this level of education until the board and students and schools work to protect all students. We are asking you to reaffirm district policy that students can express their identities freely at school without parents or guardians being made aware of it. This would be an important step into ensuring LGBTQ+ youth safety at a time where we can no longer assume that academic institutions have our backs or have our best interest at heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speakers?
Next speaker is Nicole Hassan. She has a total of 5 cards for 10 minutes.
Hello, Ms. Hassan.
Hello. My name is Nicole Hassan, and I am a parent with a student at John Bidwell Elementary. We have a couple issues in regards to the TK class and the kindergarten classroom. They need a makeover. And there's a facilities grant programming fund that we have no idea where the money went to. There's old toys, the bathroom is leaking, it has feces and pee, the children step in it. That's a concern. We wanted to, we're thinking about getting the, the playground is not up to par for the TK and preschool students, so that, we're looking into getting that redone. In December of last year, they had a treatment of mold in the classrooms. Few students came home sick after the treatment because class was held the same day. There is also concern with Ms. Carrington Taggart being pushed out of the classroom. She was bringing up this issue to the superiors in the school for, for the mold, and just got pushed out. As the children have, were attached to her, I'm sorry. The TK position is now unoccupied, which does not even have a permanent aide. This also brings up the issue of why someone who most of the parents known from ACIS has applied from the TK instructional aide position but has not given the opportunity. The admin from John Bidwell reposts the position after people have applied and then just got disregarded. We have brought the concern to Mr. Flores, but haven't heard anything back. The whole entire, or... So sorry. We would like to have this stuff investigated. We do not have a permanent TK teacher nor instructional aide. We don't understand what the administrator at John Bidwell is doing as they are letting good teachers go and not interviewing staff for the positions. We have an issue with our janitor. I guess he is not doing the job that is supposed to be done at night during the ACIS classes. He's hard to get ahold of. He has the key to the medical box, so if the teachers need to get ahold of him, they're unable to. And if there was a medical emergency, that would be a really big issue. As Room 2, that's where the ACIS classes held, and that's the one where the TK classes are held also. Again, they had old toys. It's not up to par with regulations for TK classes. The administrator and the night janitors are close friends, so anything that ACIS does or touches will not get cleaned up after them. All students in ACIS come from daily regular. John Bidwell Elementary and ACIS has been trying to communicate with the administration staff and janitors to no validation. It's concerning that ACIS does not have its own medical cabinets, as I was saying, for them to store students' medical needs. It would have, it would be nice for the ACIS program to have the same information on the students' medical needs and emergency contacts. A lot of the staff are concerned about having the night consultant just sit in a black sedan most of the time when he's supposed to be doing his job. This is an ongoing problem with administration versus ACIS, and it's affecting the school. The ACIS program and the staff have been fantastic, and they are the backbone for us working parents. We feel that the administration is just playing favoritism, and it's not getting fixed to what the children and the parents need. So we're just, we're, we don't know what to do. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Hassan.
Thank you so much.
Next speaker. Next speaker is Margarita Garcia, followed by Alfonso Ledezma.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Margarita Garcia, and I'm simply here just to bring to your attention the violations of the SLPA Director Giovanni Lenardis. I have 2 OAA hearings and rulings here that, that ruled that Giovanni Lenardis, the SLPA Director, violated ideal laws. He failed to implement manifest determination laws, he failed to implement IEP laws, okay? I have the rulings here. You're free to make copies, I'm sure the district has copies. And I want him to be, I would like for him to be accountable. How can he be the SLPA Director and violate all these laws for our special need, most vulnerable students, and not be held accountable and still have his position? This is what I'm here, just to bring to your attention. It, I'm grossed out to know that he's still here. Our kids deserve better than that. No one is above the law, okay? And he's clearly demonstrating that he can do what he wants, and will go through all lengths to hide and to lie and cheat, even from our students. That's the, that's not the kind of example we need for the district. One bad apple cannot be among a tree of good apples. I just want to bring it to your attention. I would like to see that he be held accountable for these violations. And that's all I really need to say, because if it's not brought up to your attention, I brought it up to this gentleman here before during the summer. Someone was going to get ahold of me, I never heard back from him. So I just wanted to let you know. I've, I've spoken with Ms. Lisa Allen before, plenty of times, but I know she's a busy, respectable lady. And with that, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that Mr. Lenardis cannot, no longer, represent SLPA because he violates all that he stands for. And it's here simply put, violations of manifest determination and violations of IEP. There's no excuse for that. If you'd like to make copies, I'm, you know, where would I hand them so you can make copies?
Over there to Ms. Danielle. Thank you, Ms. Ledezma.
And that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Terrence Gladney.
Good evening, Mr. Gladney.
Good evening. I'm here tonight as the Director of the TCG Memorial Academy, and I wanted, I think I've sent you most messages. We decided to sponsor the Sacramento Region Spelling Bee. That is part of the Scripps National Spelling Bee, because we saw a gap and a lack of access for our scholars in Sacramento and surrounding counties to advance to the national program without having to compete against students from four other states. I do want to thank the three schools that are in our district of the, I believe, 66 are eligible. So that's Matsuyama, Phoebe Hurst, and John Cabrillo. I know this is a huge undertaking for the administration and the staff, but I'm really just excited that they are recognizing the opportunity to exist for those scholars to compete in something that is literacy-based. We are partnering with John F. Kennedy, and we're going to host it on March 16th. So thank you to Mr. Brown as well for allowing us to use that facility and that space, and it obviously has a special meaning for our program because that is where we began in 2009. To that point, though, it is an investment and a huge undertaking for a small organization like ours. And right now, we're kind of in a tight spot because of compression being created from the CBO office upon different departments across the district, surrounding contracts. And we have not been compensated for services that have been rendered since the beginning of the year. And while I know that it is very important and is of the utmost importance to make sure that we're fiduciarily responsible with, you know, with the funds that are entrusted to us to provide services, you know, on behalf of our kids and to our kids and families, organizations like myself are at the forefront of that and actually doing the work on the school sites. So, you know, I know that, again, it's a huge process that is, that is necessary, but I would ask that you guys, you know, ask around and hopefully get some urgency around compensation with the same urgency that we serve our scholars. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
No more speakers.
Thank you.
Next item, 8.0, Communications. 8.1, Employee Organization Reports. First up, SC TA.
Good evening. I'm Nikki Malewski, President of the Sacramento City Teachers Association, and I would like to start off the new year by congratulating and welcoming Board Member Phillips as the new president of the school board, members Singh and Rhodes as other members of the executive committee. You know, since July especially, the district has been moving in an extremely positive direction, and we expect that that will continue with your leadership and the entire school board. I want to tell you a little bit about that positive direction and what it has achieved. Yesterday, we had the distinct pleasure to join with district staff, Board Member Jean, and professors from SAC State to host a showcase for dozens of student teachers from SAC State who are doing their training right here in our district to complete their credentials. The students were warmly encouraged by Superintendent Allen, Chief McCarn, Chief Wright, and Director Smith Simmons, and other district staff, as well as their colleagues at SC TA, to continue their education careers by becoming regular teachers right here in SCUSD. Several of the student teachers remarked afterwards at how appreciative they were at the event and the true encouragement that they felt, especially seeing top district administrators and SC TA working together. Our re-opener negotiations are a once-in-a-generation opportunity to use this cooperation we are building to establish a more solid foundation going forward. We are pleased that on Friday, we were able to reach an agreement on Article 8, the transfer article, which was the district's priority in this re-opener. By mutual agreement of the parties and because the adoption would result in improvements to the district's hiring process, we agreed to an immediate implementation of this article. And with that article resolved, there is still, there's still a lot of intense work to be done. There are still 2 remaining articles, Article 12 Compensation and Article 17 Staffing. We are also believe we have an opportunity to resolve a number of outstanding issues related to some unfair labor practice charges and pending arbitrations. Over the next week, with negotiations scheduled for Friday, Monday, and Wednesday, we hope to reach an agreement that resolves all of these issues and establishes that solid foundation that I mentioned. We know we have a lot of hard work in front of us, but we want to acknowledge that we truly appreciate the shift to a problem-solving way of thinking of the district leadership. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Malewski. Next up, SCIU. TCS. Teamsters. UPE. Item 8.2, District Advisory Committees. First up, Student Advisory Council. Guys are coming up in force. Lovely. Good evening, young people.
Good evening, Board Member President Phillips, Board Members and Intern Superintendent Allen.
I'm Justine Chu Griffith.
I'm Marina Sosa, and we're here to represent the Student Advisory Council. The SAC has been working diligently to develop our initiatives for the 2004 school year. As a reminder, we are following the Youth Participatory Action Research Model to critically research and analyze the problems currently facing the SCUSD youth. As part of the YPOR process, we developed a youth survey in the fall to hear from our peers regarding the concerns that they feel should be addressed. We received a total of 1,547 survey responses, the most responses ever received by the SAC.
We have spent the last few weeks analyzing the survey data and have developed areas of focus that we will further refine and research through the next few months as we finalize our resolutions. These issues include dual enrollment support, college and real-world readiness, campus faculties and hygiene, equitable access to menstrual products, substance abuse support, special education, and quality of the school food. We will present our final findings in spring with the ultimate goal of creating tangible, youth-centered change. We look forward to providing additional updates and hope to see you all attend at least one of our in-person SAC meetings this year as we continue to build relationships. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'm sorry, no, that's me. Sorry. Community Advisory Committee, CAC. I'm getting there. D-LAC? That's a district, I'm sorry, the District English Learner Advisory Committee. LCAP? I'll read the whole thing. Local Control Accountability Plan, our PAC, Parent Advisory Committee. Good evening.
Good evening, President Phillips and the rest of the board. I'm Allison French-Tubo. I have been serving on the LCAP PAC for about 4 years, representing Area 2 from first, under First Vice President Singh. So to give you an update on what the LCAP PAC has been up to, because the LCAP is a very important document for the district under California Department of Education requirements, we met this week to review an initial rough draft of the plan that will be in place for the next 3 years, and we will be having a joint meeting next week with the B, AAAB, the CAC, and the D-LAC as well. Just in general, the need for more parent involvement remains high. We do have multiple openings on the LCAP PAC. And for anyone who doesn't know, each board, there's 2 representatives from each board member area, and then the superintendent is able to appoint 2 as well. So ideally, we have 16 folks. So looking at the rough draft of the LCAP, there are several features that stand out that we wanted to raise up to share with you, the board, and of course, the public. So per new requirements from the state, all student groups that with state dashboard results in the red zone, or with college and career readiness with very low status, must be included in the goals of the LCAP. And that focus on those students will remain in the LCAP for its entire 3 years regardless of any movement on the dashboard after this year. So they're really having us zero in on students whose needs are underserved. And I just also want to mention, I think we're all pretty familiar with the dashboard categories. There's like, the, like the academic performance with English language and with math, there's suspension, there is chronic absenteeism, there's graduation rate. The one college and career readiness that us PAC members last night were making sure we understood is that's within the students who graduated, how many of them met something beyond the bare, the just the basic high school graduation... beyond the bare, the just the basic high school graduation requirements, that they met the A through G requirements, or that they completed a career technical education pathway. So that's how we can have different numbers between graduation rates and college and career readiness. So anyhow, this, so what we're going to be seeing the LCAP doing is addressing foster youth for college and career readiness, graduation rate, and the academic indicator for English language arts and math. We will see the LCAP addressing homeless youth for college and career readiness, graduation rate, and suspension rate. We'll see the LCAP addressing students with disabilities in college and career readiness, graduation rate, and suspension rate. We will see the LCAP addressing African-American students in graduation rate and suspension rate, if you guys don't mind, and addressing American Indian and Alaska Native students in suspension rate, as well as English learner students in the academic indicator for English language arts and math. So this is, we'll see information about all numerically significant groups, but there will be a focus on these because it reflects our district's amount of students with unmet needs as it is. So I personally don't like the phrase "high needs" because when we're meeting someone's needs, we're not measuring them. We just say, oh, they're here. So it's, then we start measuring when we're not meeting people's needs and make it sound like it's a lot more. But another feature that we will also see in the new LCAP is the need to account for all the student groups who have same unmet needs at the school level. So before, our LCAP might just talk generally about a group of students, but we wouldn't drill down to that, like, at this school site, maybe that school site as a whole is okay on suspension rates, looks okay, but then when you drill into actual student groups, you see that there is disparity. So just want to be clear that LCAP PAC is very aware and very passionate that SCUSD has much more work to do than just to address the red areas or the very low status. But speaking only for myself and my multiple years involved with the district, none of these statuses are a surprise. These are ongoing lacks that we have, and so I'm just personally hoping that this focused approach on these huge pain points is going to be fruitful because the students and families who are being underserved deserve better. The other big change that we see in the draft is that we are looking to go from approximately 11 goals to about five, and that's not because we're lowering our standards, that's because there is a focus on if this document is so big and unwieldy that nobody's able to wade through it, then it's not really helping us. We were told that the board has said we want this to be a guiding document for our, for the work that you guys are doing. So instead of having each of the state's eight standards, like each have its own goal, the idea is each goal will address multiple standards. So and our liaison, Dr. Eldridge, is working with SEOE on getting that approved. So that's my news. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Tubo. Let's give Brown a little time. Next up, Black African-American Advisory Board. BAAAAB. Mr. Gladney.
Hello. Terrence Gladney, Chair of the Black African-American Advisory Board. I really want to uplift tonight that we are actively recruiting for additional membership, and specifically, parents and students. So to our student board member, we would love to leverage your, you know, your presence and your equity that you have with our student group. We would love if there's representation from the Student Advisory Committee. We recognize that we can only do so much and speak for you, but we value speaking with our students. So we try to do increased outreach. We recently did a contest for students to submit a voice recording that will be on our voicemail. We had two students, two second graders, actually, that will be the voice that you guys hear if you reach out to the BAAAAB. And that's both to let our constituents and our partners know, but also to remind us of where we should be grounded. We are actually, right now, our nominations committee chair, or recruitment chair, Nikisha Thomas, who's also our secretary, Malachi Smith, who is our parliamentarian, and Franchelle Brown, they are our committee that is actively working to reach out and answer those questions and receive applications with the help of Danny Roleri, who's our liaison, to make sure we're doing as much outreach as possible to grow our numbers and our voices. So they're actually having a listening session tonight where they're trying to just better articulate the work that we're doing and how we expect to grow with increased presence from our community. On February 3rd, we will be attending the AREA, which is African-American Regional Education Alliance. They're having a professional development conference in Hayward. So we'll actually be taking a team of Sac City representation, including Board Member Phillips and Crystal Thomas, as well as some of our board members, to really just, in partnership, work and look at our outcomes historically and to set the tone for how we continue to move forward. We're really just having honest conversations with other like-minded people in the space. We do have room for additional attendees, so again, the more the merrier. So I can send you guys a message directly, and hopefully, you know, maybe one or two more people are available to join us. And we are also looking forward to the LCAP joint meeting, joint committee meeting on the 22nd. Our goal and our North Star as we continue to do this work is really to lean on the 13 recommendations established by the African-American Task Force that preceded our committee and our board, and we hope to inject those into district documents and processes and policies in the same way that our LCAP is. So we know that by working side by side with our LCAP PAC, we can do that. So we hope to better acknowledge African-American students and students by name so that they're not part of demographics or a number, but that they can see themselves represented in documents such as the LCAP. So, you know, again, that definitely only happens with your partnership. So thank you to our board liaisons and also to Board Member Jean, who's not here. She attended the LCAP PAC meeting this Wednesday, so it was refreshing. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Gladney. Item nine, Special Presentation, 9.1 Culture and Climate Presentation. Mr. Roleri, welcome.
Good evening, Board Members and Superintendent Allen, President Phillips. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce our Culture and Climate Team to share with you the transformative, anti-bias, anti-racist, trauma-informed work of our district. This evening, Danny Roleri, our Director of Professional Learning for Culture and Climate, is here, along with Candace Evans, who is one of our training specialists in our department. We are all here to speak on behalf of all of our students, especially those who continue to experience the negative and disproportionate out access opportunities and outcomes in our district. So I hand it over to Danny Roleri.
Greetings, Board Member and interim Superintendent Allen. I'm Danny Roleri, Director of Professional Learning, Culture, and Climate in SEL for SCUSD. I'm excited to be here this evening and provide information about the Culture and Climate Department and culturally responsive professional learning. Our core values and guiding principles speak directly to the efforts coming out of the Culture and Climate Department, especially the part about vigilantly working to confront and interrupt inequities that exist. Myself and the other team members are committed to interrupting a system that continues to produce disproportionate data based upon race. We are doing this work in service of and behalf of our most vulnerable students. Similar to how we conduct professional learning with adults, here we have our learning intentions for this presentation. Collectively, as our board and community here tonight, we hope we will all learn the following. We are learning about the transformation of the SEL Department to the Culture and Climate Department anchored in anti-racist, anti-bias, trauma-informed principles. We are learning how we create, how we measure culture and climate in SCUSD through student voice. We are learning what culture and climate tier-one universal practices to look for at the site and classroom level, and we're learning how to support culture and climate in SCUSD. As a reminder and for context, our SCUSD five strategic priorities, I want to take a moment to address how culture and climate can exist in all five of these. First, the anti-bias, anti-racist, trauma-informed, high-leverage practices and principles, which you will learn more about later, is how we are ensuring adults see culture and climate as high-quality instruction. As you will hear later in the presentation, we have a student voice survey conducted three times a year that provides sites and central office staff with data to analyze through an MTSS approach. The professional learning provided on anti-bias and anti-racist, trauma-informed principles and practices is culturally responsive to meet the diverse needs of the learners and is exploring content to promote a lens of cultural humility. When we build coherence and understanding and implementation of our culture and climate focus areas, we have staff that feel better supported to work and stay in SCUSD, a recruitment and retention best practice as well. And for priority number five, having a centralized workforce processes starts with how we go from the intrapersonal to interpersonal to systems-levels coherence. This notion is reinforced in our partnership with Epic Education. Additionally, is it important to recall our problem of practice? This is related to the why of culture and climate. Again, emphasizing how culture and climate is directly connected to student achievement, high-quality instruction, multi-tiered system supports, and professional learning. Prior to me being in this position, the SEL team did wonderful work to build a foundation on socio-emotional learning. Beginning last year, we enhanced our SEL work to shift in the foundation to culture and climate. A few elements to point out on this slide is going from an SEL director to a director of professional learning of culture, climate, and SEL. That alone indicates the emphasis for ongoing learning and support on any and all initiatives related to culture and climate. The foundation of the culture and climate work is anti-bias and anti-racist, trauma-informed practices and principles. And while programs such as SEL, PBIS, and Restorative Justice are still part of what we do, the lens is more transformative to intentionally disrupt the racist bias system we have. I want to uplift the notion of transformational work. That phrase is used intentionally to better articulate the potential of our culture and climate work to transform our system. This kind of transformational work can be defined as mitigating the educational, social, and economic inequities that derive from interrelated legacies of racialized cultural oppression in the United States and globally. This is big work. Additionally, visual performing arts has been included onto the team. I know you're all very familiar with the passion that CJ DeAngelis brings for our system as a vapor coordinator and the potential arts has to transform student outcomes as We are able to measure culture and climate through what are called Kelvin Pulse surveys. These student voice surveys are conducted three times a year and are administered on computers to our third through 12th plus students in classrooms. Last year, the students responded to this 12 statements under the four dimensions you see on the left. This school year, we've added five new dimensions that are connected to our anti-bias, anti-racist, trauma-informed principles and practices. The addition of these dimensions now means there are 23 statements for students to respond to during the survey. Students take their survey during the school day as directed by their teacher, and they use a four-point Likert scale to share their voice and experiences of these practices. This is a snapshot that just, of a Kelvin survey that occurred just before winter break. What you see in front of you is a heat map of how our third through sixth grade students' overall favorability to each dimension, and it is broken down by race. The color scheme is the favorability scale. The colors are in order from least favorable to most favorable, go as such. Dark orange is least favorable, then yellow, white, light blue, and dark blue is most favorable. The dimensions are in order from top to bottom of least favorable dimension to most favorable dimension, and the student groups are in order from left to right, from lowest overall favorable to highest overall favorable. To better explain how to read this, belonging was the highest-rated dimension and was rated most favorable for five of the seven student groups indicated here. Self-regulation was the second-lowest favorable-rated dimension, and for Native American students, self-regulation was their second-lowest rated dimension. A highlight to point out is our combined 71% participation rate for the fall and winter Kelvin survey from our third through sixth grade students. And it is worthy to note that our Black and Native American students responded considerably less favorably compared to their white peers. This is a similar snapshot for the Kelvin that just occurred, only this shows how our seventh through 12th-plus students responded. And by 12th-plus, I mean we have students in our system that are 13th, 14th, and 15th grade, and we made sure to get their feedback as well. We had an average of 61% of our students in the fall and the winter for this group participate, and we see the same student groups responding with lower favorability than their white peers. As you can see in our winter Kelvin data, which the winter Kelvin data reflects similar data points to our prior pulses, anti-bias and anti-racist, regulation of emotions, and self-regulation are lowest-scoring areas, which means our universal tier-one high-quality instruction must be anti-bias, anti-racist, and trauma-informed. Multi-tiered system of supports guides us to examine student outcomes through a tiered lens. If 80% of students within each student group are not meeting established benchmarks, then we have a tier-one problem. Our academic behavior and culture-climate data all indicate that we need to address our universal tier-one practices. The trauma-informed principles and practices are the learning conditions that allow students and adults to have their thinking, learning, and teaching brain activated prior to and during instruction. These are universal. They're tier-one. They must be in place in every school and every classroom in order to effectively disrupt our disproportionate race-based student outcomes. We are addressing adult biases and mindsets through two tools. The Compassionate Dialogue Protocol, otherwise known as the RIR, Recognize, Interrupt, Repair, and the Cycle of Inference Debiasing Tool. These two communication protocols support people with their intrapersonal reflection and development before they go into interpersonal connections. The next few slides will display the layers of professional learning being provided. First, we have central office leadership, and as you can see here, we have several central office teams engaging in professional learning on anti-bias, anti-racist, trauma-informed principles, and the communication tools I mentioned in the previous slide. The next layer of professional learning focuses on site leadership capacity building. The content here is very similar to what central office staff receives in terms of trauma-informed principles and the communication tools, and for site leaders, there is an added focus on building their capacity as anti-bias, anti-racist, trauma-informed leaders and building their understanding of our high-leverage practices. Site leaders are expected to engage in this professional learning and model it at their work at the site level, however, are not trained to deliver this training to their staff. In addition to the summer pre-service and monthly leadership sessions, we offer monthly consultancies with our partners. As you can see, work is being done to support all levels of site leaders, principals, assistant principals, and site instructional coordinators. The last layer to present is the work being done with our certified staff. Certified staff engaged in pre-service professional learning on trauma-informed principles and practices. There's ongoing professional learning sessions and resources to support implementation of the high-leverage practices that are being provided and offered on an optional basis. These visuals represent the foundation of our anti-bias, anti-racist, trauma-informed principles and practices. On the left are the trauma-informed principles, understanding trauma and stress, cultural humility, safety and predictability, compassion and dependability, empowerment and collaboration, and social-emotional wellness that guide our work and provide an understanding for recognizing and reducing trauma in schools, systems, and people. On the right are the two communication tools that guide our interpersonal, interpersonal and organizational work to recognize our own biases and interrupt patterns, practices, and policies that perpetuate disproportionate racial student outcomes. The RIR protocol gives us framework for how to engage in compassionate dialogue in service of students and adults in our system. We have identified five tier-one high-leverage practices that are anti-bias, anti-racist, and trauma-informed. These are recognition of emotions, community circles, predictability, self-regulation, and gratitude. Our intent is to provide the necessary content and resources for adults in the system to implement these effectively. We feel that these practices are fundamental and need to occur daily. Again, this is part of the tier-one high-quality instruction. If our instruction is not anti-bias and anti-racist and trauma-informed, then it is not high-quality instruction. On this slide, we have the Culture and Climate Resources, which are the weekly slide decks that we provide, and the Anti-Bias- which are the weekly slide decks that we provide and the Anti-Bias, Anti-Racist, Trauma-Informed Starter Kit. The weekly slide deck is emailed to teachers, site leaders, and central office staff weekly. The Starter Kit covers the five high-leverage practices to incorporate daily into the classroom and schools. Both of these resources are intended to be user-friendly for staff and contain relevant information, resources, and practices. Additionally, we have upcoming opportunities in the certificated professional learning catalog. Through the titles of three upcoming sessions for staff to participate in is Addressing the Conditions That Create Unconscious Bias, Transformational SCL: Disrupting Systems of Inequities, and Building Classroom and Culture and Climate Through an Anti-Bias and Anti-Racist Trauma-Informed Lens. I now want to call up the voice of a practitioner, a training specialist from the Culture and Climate Team, Candace Evans, to share her thoughts and experiences.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Ms. Lisa. There's a lot of love, admiration, and respect I have for this woman in that seat, so she knows what I mean when I say that. Okay, my name is Candace Evans, and I serve as an SCL Culture and Climate Social Justice Training Specialist with Sacramento City Unified School District. I stand here before you because of the marginalized adults and students of color who are far too often overlooked, dismissed, and not included within the day-to-day structural development of our institution. I am here to bring awareness to the disproportionality of suspensions, behavioral, and academic development of students of color. I am here as a voice for the adults of color who are in a system where they do not feel supported for their existence nor their expertise and contributions to our district. And so with that in mind, I will share with y'all a reflection of my experience on the team. I was hired in 2017 to serve on the team as threading social justice and all things SCL within the school district as a training specialist. So when I say all things SCL, social-emotional learning, I am referring to transformative SCL, community harm and healing circles, trauma-informed practices, mindfulness, implicit bias, racial and cultural trauma, anti-racist, anti-blackness learning, restorative justice for adult-to-adults as well as students-to-students, adult-to-student situations, Kelvin data, Epic, SCL as an MTS as tier-one support, and many others. With our current director, Mr. Danny Riletti, we are taking the aforementioned topics to foster an amplified platform of coherence for our district via our anti-racist and anti-bias trauma-informed work. We are also developing strategies to dismantle our racialized institution with a keener focus on anti-racist and anti-blackness practices. And basically, our data within our district shows the need for this. I am currently supporting our system to achieve all this by initially starting with the adults in the system. We know there is work to be done with shifting adult mindsets. And in order to do that, we need to create an authentic culture of care. We're all adults, and when I mean all adults, I am referring to classified. I am referring to certificated. I am referring to management. Feel valued, affirmed, appreciated, and respected. And this especially goes to the adults of color within our system. I am also supporting this within our system by helping to or collaborating in terms of creating a community where adults feel that they belong. When the adults learn these practices, they are able to model these practices for the students that we all serve, which will have a tremendous impact on the academic and social and emotional well-being of our students. So when we talk about transformative, social, and emotional learning, okay, what we mean by that is that we are looking at how the adults show up in the system. How do they show up day-to-day? How do they show up with their beliefs, their mindset, their biases, and how it connects with their work? Because, trust me, they bring that into the work. They may not articulate that, but that's what they bring into the work. I am also intentional about providing support for our leaders to create a culture of care starting initially with themselves via self-care plans and being a thought partner and supporting their emotional and their social and emotional well-being. As I work with administrators in this capacity, because I do follow up with the administrators to make sure that they're following their self-care plans, I then develop a comprehensive site plan that is tailored to meet the needs of that specific site from a transformative social learning perspective as well as an anti-racist lens. So I thank you all for your time, and I now yield the floor. Thank you.
So thank you to Candace for sharing her voice and expertise and lens to this presentation. So what comes next? First, the next round of the Kelvin Student Voice Survey is in April. This will provide the last opportunity for central office and sites to analyze the differences in fall, winter, and spring Kelvin student data and what are needed next steps to support areas of growth. Through an MTS cycle of inquiry, we will look at data and make informed decisions about how to focus and adapt our professional learning for management, certificated, and classified staff. And very importantly, we understand the need to engage authentically with district and community leaders and groups. In your role as board members, we have offerings of how you can support culture and climate in SAC City Unified School District. First, we invite you to engage in professional learning with our anti-bias and anti-racist, trauma-informed partners. This provides firsthand experiences for you to deepen your knowledge and understanding of what they bring to our system. We also have a list of additional reading materials that I can recommend and provide to you upon request. Feel free to reach out. And when you are out visiting sites and classrooms, look for the anti-bias, anti-racist, high-leverage practices in action. And a last way to support is by investing fiscal and human resources that will contribute to the professional learning required to carry out this work. I want to quickly revisit the learning intentions and do a quick process check. I hope we did a good enough job. Candace, Erin, and us hope we did a good enough job and effective job in providing clear information on these. And before we head into comments and questions, I want to end with messaging the significance of the work from the Culture and Climate Department. Our academic attendance and behavior data shows we continually underserve our Black and Brown students. Thus, it is my belief that in order to disrupt that trend as a system, we need to lean into the feelings of discomfort that come along with pushing back against a racist system. In service of kids, we need to shift adults' mindsets and practices. We know this isn't easy, and it will take time, and we must stay the course, addressing the poor outcomes we continue to see, which is why we stress that the anti-bias, anti-racist, trauma-informed principles and practices is tier-one high-quality instruction. They are practices every student should fundamentally receive on a daily basis. I cannot stress enough that all this needs to be done in service of kids. And now we're prepared to answer as best we can any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I lost my fuzzy on my microphone. I'm going to open that up to my colleagues. Any questions? I know there's... Oh, 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 wait. I'm sorry. Public comment.
We don't have any public comment. You're good.
I was psychic. Okay, so open it up to my fellow colleagues. Jamie?
Can you hear me? There we go. Thank you for this presentation. I feel like this is the kind of work that, you know, when we were growing up in SAC City, like this foundation is going to completely change the trajectory of how SAC City, both our staff, our community, but our kids are going to grow up in the city. So this work is incredibly important, and I love how thoughtful everything is. And of course, I think leading in with a student voice is amazing. My daughter came home and told me about the survey, so we appreciate that. I do have one question. On the results, and that goes from both the third grade all the way up to 12th grade, self-regulation was low in all categories. Can you tell me what we're going to do or what the idea for addressing this?
Sure. I'll answer as best I can with the current information.
Yeah, how that goes in with MTS as that tier-one, what are we looking at with that?
Yeah, so definitely there is analysis of the trends that we're seeing, and seeing that trend happen across all segments, right, third through 12th plus, shows a need that we need to address at a universal tier-one level. So part of that would be in the weekly slide decks, we promote practices. So it's a slide deck where a teacher can visually put up on the projection screen, and there are slides that promote community circles, zones of regulation, that teachers don't necessarily have to like look to a user manual or guide on doing it, and there's notes embedded in the slide, so a teacher could kind of help promote and teach that. And our Anti-Bias, Anti-Racist Starter Kit, again, similar idea of a slide deck that provides resources. When I think of moving beyond what we have already, beyond what I've already expressed, I think there's a need in terms of looking at what resources beyond what's already there that teachers need to continue to go more than just the slide decks, right? So whether it's education, professional learning that we could incorporate and look at, so part of that data trends is in, okay, there's a need for self-regulation. How do we offer professional learning for certificated teachers and get them to show up and participate in that? I would love to, in my dream world, provide, when you think of self-regulation, sometimes there are sensory tools and things that are needed in the classroom to help also support it. So providing teachers with items and such that can kind of like create that safe space or that... So I'm not sure if I answered your question.
Yeah, you did, and I guess that kind of made me think about something else. So we can send out the slide decks, and we can offer, you know, professional learning, but how do we... I mean, that's kind of my concern is we can provide this, but is it being actually used for our students in the classroom? Because if these numbers are so low across the board, it's not just a, let's send out the data. How do we follow up and make sure that our staff is trickling this down to our students who clearly are saying, "We need this"?
Right. Well, and I think the other part of that could be then looking at, and we are doing this already, the professional learning we provide to our site leaders, because it can't just be obviously all on the teacher to receive this information and perform at the highest level we want. So providing the site leader with coaching and what this looks like as well, so there's that through line.
And another follow-up question, sorry I keep asking. Is it possible that this can also be something that, like I said, if it's across the board for third and 12th, you know, maybe sent out to parents or guardians and something that's a take-home that folks can work on outside of the classroom? I think that's just self-regulation in adults and children is huge, and that is really like an important foundation of, you know, being a human being. So how can we do more?
That's a great idea, and we can absolutely work with our culture-climate team on how we communicate that out to parents and family members. I also just wanted to go back to something that Candace said about adult self-regulation. And so, you know, the self-regulation scores that are low across the board for all of our students, we do have strategies that we've shared that are in place. But we also know through our work that we need to begin with adults, right, and adult self-regulation, and how do we support our adults in that? And so hence the professional learning, you know, Candace talking about self-care plans for site leaders, for teachers, to make sure that when they go to school every day, they are regulated and able to be able to model those strategies and support their students in using those strategies. So that's a huge part of it in order to be able to get that into the classrooms. I will also say that we're really excited that we have started having conversations with our SETA partners about professional learning and how we can work to make sure that the professional learning gets in the hands of the people who need it the most and what that looks like. So we have meetings coming up to talk about professional learning priorities and what that's going to look like so that we can ensure that that professional learning is landing where it needs to and be able to determine how effective it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Candace, too. I really loved everything that you said about the self-care plan for people. That is, it's wonderful work, so thank you very much.
We can provide self-care plans for the board as well. So I mean, if you like that, we can do some SCL sessions with y'all. We would love to have that opportunity so you can see. I didn't come up there. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. And I just want, if it's... Can I speak to the...
Go ahead.
Okay. So I do want to further elaborate on what my amazing boss and my boss's boss said. This, if you go to, we have what's called monthly SCL themes that will carry a teacher and an administrator throughout the entire year based on various themes. It could be empathy. It could be perseverance. It could be resilience. But within those lessons, we also have family lessons so that the families can... So whatever is being taught within the classroom, it could be reinforced at home. We are proponents of collaboration. When we talk about this idea of social-emotional learning, we are talking about lifelong learners, and that takes collaboration. And so we are not in the business, our department, of being, of working in isolation. We believe in the concept of doing with and not to. And so to do that, and for that to be, for that to be quite authentic and tangible in our learning process for our students, we believe in trying to engage the families in that process as well because families have a voice. We believe that every single student and family enters that classroom space with intellectual capital, and it's incumbent upon the adults within our system to capitalize on that by valuing and affirming that on a day-to-day basis. So I hope that that answered some of your questions in terms of that. But I'm going to transition if I may. I do want to go back to the board about the SCL sessions. We would be honored, we would be thrilled, to do an SCL adult self-care training session with all of you. And so I'm saying this, and I'm not speaking this as lip service. I really mean that we would love to show you why we do what we do and why we're so passionate about what we do and why we will continue to be relentless in supporting our adults in this system. Because if we can help the adults, the children will be helped as well. We're not trying to turn a blind eye to the students, but what we do know and what the data does show us is that if we can support our adults, and I'm going back especially, our adults of color in this system who are constantly feeling silenced. And that is not, that is a reality within our district. So we would love to have that opportunity to facilitate a SCL adult self-care session. I mean, please email my boss, Danny Riletti, so we can get that started. And I hope that this is something that y'all will not just say, "Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah," and then don't get to it. I really hope that you will actually put your mouths where the action is. Because if you really want to know what's going on in our schools, and honestly, y'all not here to do it... You're not here every day. You're not here to see what we see, right? So if you really want to get a deeper understanding and idea as to what we do, how we do it, and why we do it, please email my boss so we can do this adult SCL self-care. And I would love to put y'all on the plan and follow up with y'all, make sure that y'all are on it. Ms. Lisa's on her head because she know I'd be checking on her. I'm on her. I'm like, "What are we doing? How are we doing? What are we doing to, you know, to build our SCL capacity?" And so, and it's been wonderful. And I think that with our experience and just working together in that capacity, for me as an employee of this district, I have such a deeper, profound respect for Ms. Lisa because throughout that process of our SCL time, she's been, she's vulnerable, and she's authentic, and she's real, and we are both learning and growing together in our SCL. So if Ms. Lisa can do it, all of y'all can do it. So let's schedule that appointment. Please email my boss, Danny Riletti.
Thanks, Ms. Candace. Christina?
Oh, are you, are you?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I thought she was next. Thank you. Yes, I agree with Member Villa on all of that, and thank you for that presentation. I just, I have two things. I wanted to know, have you tried to partner with the Parent Teacher Home Visit on this? I think that would be a great partnership.
I have experienced a former, as a principal at Oak Ridge, a parent teacher home project was a huge, huge game changer for our community in South Oak Park. project was a huge, huge game changer for our community in South Oak Park. And actually, in standing here, when Board Member Villa and Assistant Superintendent Hanson were talking, it made me think of the triangle of students, staff, and families, and the education that goes around what we're talking about, adult self-regulation and what we're doing.
Yeah.
And how perhaps a common through line could be partnering with Gretchen.
Yeah.
In terms of how do we kind of like put this, get this in the hands of families when they're at home in an authentic setting?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we were on that same line, like when you were talking, I was like, that, that is the, that is the perfect match right there, made it happen. Definitely, yeah. And then I was just, as you were doing your presentation, I was thinking, you know, I've been on this board now for 11 years, and I was thinking back to, you know, back to the castle days of, you know, how long we've been doing STL, and you guys have really come a long way. And I just want to congratulate you on the work. Like, this is, this is fantastic, the work that you guys are doing, so congratulations.
Thank you, we truly appreciate that.
It's well-deserved, congratulations, the work that you're doing for our staff, the work that you're doing for our students, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rhodes, eventually I'm going to say everyone's name right, because I'm just calling first names, because that's where I'm comfortable today, so Chinua, you're next up, sir.
All good. I just have, I have one question for you.
I should just stay up here.
No, no, you're good.
My bad.
No, no, you're good, you're good. First, I really enjoyed the presentation and the how to support culture and climate and these things on what we can do that is actionable, appreciative, and really want to urge my colleagues that we do some of these in action, and also I'll email you about the books. Actually, can we get Danielle to just send that out, these books to everyone? Does this make sense? If this is, if the?
Yeah, I, I could work on gathering resources.
Just give the resources and send them out to the board.
Yeah.
Don't wait for us to reach out to you, please send them just to us.
Okay.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
And then also, I have a question about demographics. When you were going through it and you looked at the demographics, my question to you, do we have like the information of, of those ethnic backgrounds? Are we looking at also in those groups, students that have disabilities, maybe students are homeless? Is that, is that information gathered to like give a broader view of the populations and the, and the groups?
Yeah, so on the Kelvin dashboard, one of the promising parts of it is on the dashboard, what I showed you is broken down by race. There's a drop-down box where you can break it down by gender, you can break it down by, and we're adding, we're, we partner effectively with Kelvin, where we're saying we need to add other dimensions and areas that we need to break it down by, because this isn't enough for us, and they are working and partnering with us. Part of it involves obviously the IT department to have that sync, that synchronicity and integration, but yeah, we do have that capacity to add that, so that way we're going deeper and making sure we're not, we're not generalizing and looking at a certain group, and we're breaking down to the highest degree possible.
I think, I think that'd be great, you know, we just had a report that came out that broke down where, you know, we need to do better in our district, and it was shown out through California, but we looked at our information from our district, and I am interested, curious on how the two correlate, so that we, as a board, have opportunity to make holistic decisions around the policies and things that we push forward that impact our students broadly across the district. So I appreciate this, this is beautiful piece of work, and that is my time.
Thank you.
Anything else from my colleagues? That was a fantastic presentation, and I think it's really important to understand there are things that we learn in kindergarten that we need to drag with us all through our lives, and touching the grown-ups is where we're going to learn that, so I'll be working with my colleagues and their calendars, because you come in, Ms. Candace.
I'm waiting.
Yes.
You come in, I will be here.
Yeah, I truly appreciate this, this, so thank you so much, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you so much, everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you. We have 10.1, public hearing, AB 1200, public discourse and approval of MOU between SCUSD and United Professional Educators, UPE. Mr. Casio?
Good evening, President Phillips, members of the board, Superintendent Allen. This evening, we're presenting four different AB 1200 public disclosure documents for United Professional, this first one is for United Professional Educators and presented by my colleague here, Consey McCarron, our Chief HR, and myself, to focus on the fiscal portions, so.
Good evening, Board President Phillips, members of the board, I'm Consey McCarron, your Chief Human Resource Officer, and the UPE agreement had a number of components to it, an agreement that closes 2023 and establishes a timeframe for us to close out actually 2023, '24, '24, '25, '25, '26. And in those, in the next three years, the things we will be limited to talking to and about unless we mutually agree to something else, are those articles listed on the screen in front of you. The compensation for UPE will be, should you approve it, 10% salary schedule increase, retro to July 1, 2022, for all UPE classifications, and an additional 6% salary increase for principals and assistant principals, again, retroactive to '71, '22.
And back over to Jesse.
Thank you. This is the fiscal impact portion for '22, '23, the estimated cost is 3.1 million. Because of the timing, this will be reflected in the '23, '24 budget year, that is a cost for all funds. And then for fiscal year '23, '24, moving forward, it's the estimated ongoing cost of 3.3 million, again, for all funds. And then this is the multi-year projections fiscal impact, and this does reflect the all four agreement, or excuse me, all four proposals brought forth in the board meeting tonight. So as you can see in the different colored rows there, the first being the UPE projected costs, as shared in the earlier slide, and then it moves down each of the other units respectively, and we'll, we'll go through more details for each of those in the following presentations, but wanted to show the overall multi-year projected impact with each of those agreements.
And the last thing that we want to say in this before question and answer time is we want to thank the UPE negotiation team members who engaged in negotiation process with the district on your behalf, and appreciate the time and energy and effort. We know that it takes a lot regardless of which negotiation team you're on, and so would want to offer our thanks, as well as to the district's team, which truly a team effort.
Thank you. That's public hearing item, it's an action item. I'm practicing. So that's the first one, we had the public hearing, and we're going to have an action on that, so we will be taking a vote.
You want to call for public comment?
I know, I feel like I should have asked at the beginning, beginning, sorry. So, public comment, before the question and answer, public comment?
You're still getting your feet under you, we don't have any public comment.
And I'm going to keep making you say that until, okay, so that, it is an action item. Any comments from my colleagues? Madam Superintendent? Can we call that for a vote? Have a move. Chinu, okay, Mr. Rhodes is moving. I don't, I don't know. It should be an action item.
Excellent, we go.
Okay, so, your fingers up?
Oh, I meant like I'll move it.
I know, so just say it.
Oh, I'll move it.
Okay, so, moved by Member Villa, seconded by Member Pritchett. I'm just taking a minute. Yeah, can we put that to a vote, please?
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm ready for the next one. So when we move, guys, just say it out loud, because I'm already half-blind, and so I'm not seeing well through the sides of my glasses, so that helps. Sorry, and I forgot the student preferential, too. It's a lot of things that you have to put together here, so, sorry, Gracie just kicked my leg next time. Okay, so moving on, item 10.2, public hearing, AB 1200, public disclosure and approval of MOU between SCUSD and the Teamsters Classified Supervisors.
All right, good evening. So this is for the Teamsters Classified Supervisors, AB 1200 public disclosure, starting off with the key provisions of the agreement.
Good evening. Like the last one, this, this agreement closes out the '22, '23 school year, and also actually from '23, '22, '23 through '26, we agree unless something else is identified to discuss the articles listed on the screen in front of you. In addition, the compensation components include a 10% salary increase, retroactive to July 1, 2022, for all TCS employees employed by the district as of June 30, '23, and then an additional 6% salary increase, retroactive to July 1, 2022, for specified job classifications employed, employed by the district as of June 30, 2023 as well. And I'll say it now as opposed to later, we want to thank the TCS negotiation team and members, as well as those that participated on the district's team, lots of time, energy, and effort, and we appreciate that from all employees.
Thank you. This takes us to the fiscal impact portion. The estimated cost for '22, '23 is 850,000, that is also the estimated ongoing cost for each of the, the multi-years, excuse me, it's 425,000 for each of the multi-years, and that's for all funds. And I apologize, that first row is a typo for '22, '23, it should say 425,000 as well. I apologize for that. This takes us to the fiscal impact of the multi-year projections. This is the same slide as in the previous presentation, it shows the impact of each of those units on the overall multi-year projections. And I should have mentioned, this is the first interim budget with these adjustments incorporated. And that takes us to Q and A, thank you.
Thank you. Public comment?
There is none.
Colleagues, anyone have anything they'd like to share about this? Can we put it for a motion?
Move it.
Moved by Christina Pritchett, thank you, seconded by Jamie Villa. We're going to put this to a vote, but I'm going to say a student preferential vote.
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
It's moved.
Shouldn't, that passes. Moving on, item 10.3, public hearing, AB 1200, public disclosures and approval of MOU between SCUSD and the Teamsters Local 150 Union.
Great, that takes us to the Teamsters AB 1200 public disclosure, starting off with the key provisions of the agreement.
Similar to the others, this agreement closes negotiations for the '22, '23 school year, as well as the next three years, from 2023 to 2026, with us talking about those articles noted on your screen, unless both parties agree to add something else. The compensation items include 10% salary increase across the board, retro to July 1, 2022, for all Teamsters employees employed by the district as of June 30, '23, and an additional 6% salary increase, retroactive, again, to July 1, 2022, for school plant operation managers 1, 2, and 3, excluding training positions, employed by the district as of June 30, 2023. We again would like to thank the Teamsters negotiation team, as well as those that served on the district. Again, we know it's time away from sites and positions and duties, and appreciate that time.
Thank you. That takes us to the fiscal impact for fiscal year '22, '23 of 950,000, again, reflected in the '23, '24 budget year for all funds, and then for the cost ongoing in the multi-years, estimated cost of 950,000. Takes us to the multi-year projections, again, reflecting the cost of each of those agreements within the multi-year. And that takes us to Q and A.
Thank you. Public comment?
None.
Colleagues? Put that for, thank you, Ms. Pritchett. Second? I will second. Can we put that to a vote? Student preferential vote?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
She said aye. Okay. Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
It's been approved.
Onward and upward, 10.4, public hearing, AB 1200, public disclosure of proposed salary improvements for non-represented confidential and management employees.
Great, thank you. This is the AB 1200 public disclosure for non-represented employees. Since this is a non-represented group, there is an, of course, key provisions of an agreement, since there is not agreement, but here are the proposed salary proponent, excuse me, improvements. Did you want to go through the conversation or should I just keep going? Okay, sorry. Conversation items include for the '22, '23 year, non, non-represented employees will receive a 10% salary schedule increase, retroactive to July 1, 2022. And then below is the AB 1200 projected fiscal impact, that estimated cost of 3.2 million for '22, '23 for all funds, and then an ongoing cost of 3.2 million for all funds in the multi-year as well. That takes us to, once again, a snapshot of the multi-year projections and the impact of each of those units incorporated. And lastly, Q and A, thank you.
Thank you. Public comment?
No public comment.
Thank you. Colleagues? Moved by, moved by Singh, seconded by Ms. Pritchett. Ooh, is that to a vote? Student preferential?
Aye.
Member Kayata?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
It's approved.
Thank you. Item 11, 11.1, presentation of the District Strategic Arts Plan, CJ DeAngelis.
Good evening again. I get the pleasure of introducing CJ DeAngelis, our SAC City Visual and Performing Arts Coordinator, as well as Molly Morrison, who is our Visual Arts Department Head at Seaview-Kamakachi High School, and also part of the district arts team. And I'd also like to ask that our district arts team folks come join us up at the front, if you will, so that we know who you are. I feel like we had some others to just come sit up here with us, no? You want to stay in the back? Okay, never mind, we'll acknowledge them again. This is a wonderful presentation, I'm really excited to be here and share this with all of you this evening. This has been many, many years in the works, and so I look forward to hearing your comments and hearing from our teachers.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. DeAngelis.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, Superintendent Allen, and esteemed trustees of the Sacramento City Unified School District. I am CJ DeAngelis. You all had one, so I wanted one, too. I am the district coordinator for Visual and Performing Arts. I am here tonight with one of our VAPIT teachers, Molly Morrison, and several members of our community and district arts teams to propose the adoption of a comprehensive strategic arts plan in order to improve equity and access to arts education for all students in SCUSD. Next slide. All right, whoops, not next page, okay. Our presentation tonight is divided into six sections. Our purpose tonight is not just to present the culmination of several years of work on this plan, but to inform the board about the rationale for why this plan is important, and to give the board insight as to how this plan was developed in collaboration with SCUSD teachers, parents, students, arts nonprofit organizations, business leaders, the Sacramento County Office of Education, and even the mayor's office. And I'm going to try my best to fit all of this information into a 15-minute presentation. Next slide. So this, the strategic arts plan- So the strategic arts planning process is a seven-step process in which we reflect on the current state of arts instruction in the school district, examine what a high-quality arts education program looks like, create a vision and values that are in line with what many different stakeholders think and want arts education to look like, and formulate a plan to move the district toward those goals. The policies, action plans, and recommendations created from this process provide a long-range plan for implementation of a sequential, standards-based curriculum in the arts. With this presentation, we have officially reached step five in the strategic planning process. In the next few slides, I'm going to give you a brief overview of those first four steps. All right, in 2018, SCUSD received a grant from the Sacramento County Office of Education for strategic arts planning, with the intent of creating a district arts plan. I do want to give credit to my predecessor, Gary Courtney, who started this process and recruited the first version of our district arts team. In January of 2020, I took over work on this project and was able to meet with the team twice before COVID-19 hit. And work on the arts plan was shelved to focus on virtual training for teachers and student retention. In January of 2022, I met with SCTA leadership to add more teachers to our district arts team. I felt that it was critical to collaborate with SCTA on this process to make it transparent and inclusive of the voices and perspectives of our valued educators. With SCTA's approval, we increased the size of our district arts team to 10 teachers, representing every grade level and almost every arts discipline. From February of 2022 through June of 2023, our district arts team and community arts team met regularly to provide input and feedback as the plan was developed. After about 18 months of collaborative meetings, we drafted the arts plan based entirely on this input and feedback. In February of 2023, the SCUSD school board, that's you, voted to approve a policy update for our district's VAPA policy. This more inclusive board policy was used to inform the template for the final arts plan draft. Once the plan was drafted, we solicited feedback from both teams and created the document that we are presenting today. Next slide. The second stage of this process was to assess the current state of arts education in SCUSD. This was a difficult and laborious task, given the size of the school district and that we were still in the midst of a pandemic. Much of this work had to be accomplished virtually. We were lucky to have a significant amount of data collected by my predecessor. Our district arts team analyzed the new and existing data from our schools through the four lenses listed on this slide. We specifically examined how the district performed in the following nine areas: standards-based curriculum, instruction and methodology, student assessment, professional development, program administration and personnel, partnerships and collaboration, resources and facilities, program evaluation, and communication and advocacy. Next slide. Based on our analysis of the data, we identified several areas of concern with arts instruction in our district. First and foremost, we found that the district was out of compliance with the California Education Code, which states that the adopted course of study for grades 1 through 6 shall include instruction beginning in grade 1 and continuing through grade 6 in the Visual and Performing Arts, including instruction in the subjects of dance, music, theater, and visual arts. We also believe that many of the other areas of concern stem from this. Additionally, access to the Visual and Performing Arts classes is extraordinarily inequitable throughout the system. In many cases, SCUSD students do not receive access to arts instruction until as late as 7th grade. There is no district-wide standards-based curriculum for the arts. There are no identifiable feeder patterns within the district, which often results in students learning one arts discipline, for example, orchestra, and then attending a high school that has no orchestra program. In addition, there are no common assessments for VAPA classes and no professional development for teachers. At the elementary level, individual schools' resources and facilities for arts instruction are highly dependent on PTA funding, and there is little organized communication between sites or art advocacy throughout the district. As a result, some schools with active PTA organizations are able to provide arts instruction, while many, many others are not. It is clear that arts instruction has not been a district priority in SCUSD for many decades. In slides 7 through 9, I have detailed some of the specific issues by grade level. These can be examined further in your slide packets, and my colleagues and I will be happy to address any specific grade-level concerns at the end of this presentation. But for now, we're going to skip three slides to slide 10. There it is, okay. The next stage in our arts planning process was to examine our district board policy on the Visual and Performing Arts. My colleagues and I presented almost exactly a year ago to update our board VAPA policy, which helped us to design this arts plan. Next slide. The new arts policy can be found on page 16 of the district arts plan. Using this much more comprehensive board policy, our art teams have crafted a plan that, if adopted, will guide the district to adopt academic standards and develop a sequential, standard-based curriculum for the arts, provide instructional materials and resources, hire credentialed Visual and Performing Arts teachers at all grade levels, provide professional development for teachers, encourage the integration of community arts resources, and develop a set of metrics to measure and evaluate the success of the implementation of the strategic arts plan. Next slide. With this framework in place, our teams set out to develop our strategic arts plan. While there are many areas of concern and opportunity in SCUSD, our team decided that the three areas that would have the greatest impact across the district were: social-emotional learning and development through the arts, cultural relevance in and through the arts, that is, supporting students to uphold their cultural identities and develop critical perspectives that challenge societal inequalities, and college and career opportunities and readiness through the arts. Next slide. One of our first steps as a team was to develop a cohesive mission statement and vision that would guide the team through the strategic arts planning process. Through a series of conversations and exercises with the district arts team, our district arts team crafted the following statements. When disagreements or discussions around the plan arose, we always referred back to these statements. Next slide. The team then identified three pillars to build the plan around: content, infrastructure, and sustainability. Using these three pillars, we then identified 11 areas, or strategic aims, that we determined needed to be addressed specifically in the arts plan. Once these strategic aims were created, we then created 19 specific and measurable goals. These strategic aims and goals can be found on pages 19 through 21 of the plan. Next slide. Once, so this is a screenshot from the first page of the plan, just to kind of show you how to read the last two-thirds of it. So once each pillar, aim, and goal was determined, we developed a series of strategies to help move the district towards these goals. These strategies can be found on page 23 through 65 of the arts plan. For each strategy, we developed a series of action steps. For each action step, we identified which people or departments the VAPA department would most likely have to work with to accomplish these steps, what the possible budgetary implications may be, and we developed a timeline for each strategy. The plan was then divided into three phases. Phase 1 is to be initiated or completed in the first or second year of the plan. Phase 2 is years 3 through 4, and Phase 3 is the fifth year of the plan. Finally, we developed a series of measurable outcomes that we will use to determine if the objectives have been completed. Next slide. I would now like to introduce our district arts team chairperson and district arts teacher, an all-around fantastic person, Molly Morrison.
Good evening, Ms. Morrison.
Thank you, board members, for having me. Thank you, Superintendent Allen, for having me tonight. As we study artworks, I often say to my students in the art studio, nothing happens in a vacuum. Meaning, we look at famous works of art, and we almost remember that artwork started as an idea, in someone's mind, and then a sketch on a piece of paper. And it's possible that many people told this artist along the way that that art was never going to happen in the way that they imagined. And that's all before the artwork could be created or find its way into that gallery. I was at the first meeting in 2018, and every meeting thereafter, to help create and build the strategic art plan with the district. It was an idea for so long within our little district arts team, and boy, were we excited. The collaboration and understanding of issues between teaching colleagues at different schools was validating. We were all seeing the impact of no arts, no or little arts, in grades below ours. Each year, more and more students were letting us know through their words and actions that they had never learned primary colors or how to use a ruler. They had not had regular practice of their musical instruments in order to enhance their craft, or how they could simply not afford that after-school theater opportunity so many peers got to enjoy. The lack of arts had eliminated not only important knowledge, but also the appreciation of the arts as a cornerstone of their early development that my generation so enjoyed and maybe even took for granted. The district art team knew that if we could just have our idea get some support behind it, we could have an impact. And then COVID-19. The district team's meeting came to an abrupt halt. But the chatter, the chatter was all about the arts. We remember how the arts saved us. Debbie Allen teaching dance on Saturday mornings, music concerts and DJ dance parties on Instagram, paint-by-numbers. We all turned to the arts to get through this scary time. And with that realization came momentum. We could feel the shift towards arts as a tangible solve for our students' social and emotional needs. This shift was a propeller to our ideas, and our meeting started again. And we had pen to paper. We had a sketch that we could bring, that we could bring this life, this art life back to our schools. In my 20-plus years of teaching, I've had hundreds of stories of students who have been changed by the arts, from continuing their study of arts at Yale Theatre, USC, UCLA Film School, AMDA, the Chicago Institute of Art, to showcasing major, major works of art at events and galleries like the DeYoung Museum, California State Fair, and the Crocker Art Museum. If you've been in my classroom, you may have seen my file cabinet is encased with student notes about the life-changing impacts the arts have had on these students, and I'm proud in each and every one of them. But all of that pales in comparison to the student who truly believes the nine or more years of school life have had no purpose for them until they joined that required fine art class in high school. Suddenly, there's no wrong answers. They can make up the meaning behind any artwork and be right. They can push boundaries of project requirements and get bonus points for originality. They can problem-solve and collaborate with strangers who become friends. And while they may not go on to pursue the arts, they do come back often and tell us how their lives were changed by that one course. We teach to service the whole student, both sides of the brain. We are here to save the next generation of SCUSD students, so they never have to feel like nothing at school is for them. So tonight, we bring you our ideas, our little sketchbook, and ask you to support our new strategic art plan with excitement, grace, and patience, so that every SCUSD student can finally benefit from the arts as a regular part of the curriculum during their school day. We call on this board to act to reduce decades of district policy that dismantled arts programs in our schools. We call on you to provide the arts at every grade level, for every child, in every classroom, in every school at SAC City Unified School District. Thank you.
This brings us to our final slide in the presentation. So if approved, this arts plan will serve as a framework that will be used to guide the expansion of arts education in the district over the next five years. I encourage all of you to look through the plan in its entirety before your next board meeting. If the board has any suggested revisions, please communicate those to me before the next board meeting, so that I can revise the plan accordingly. If there are no concerns, I plan on submitting approval on the consent agenda for the next meeting, which I will be attending to answer any questions that might arise between now and then before the board votes. Pictured on this slide is our team's priority wedge. As you can see, once the plan is adopted, our first priority is to examine the plan for budgetary considerations and determine exactly how much funding would be needed for the various stages of implementation. I am happy to report that the next time I appear here, it will be to present the budget for our Proposition 28 funding, which will allow us to expand the number of Visual and Performing Arts teachers in district-wide. While Prop 28 is a huge first step towards implementing this plan, there will likely be significant additional financial investment needed in order to build the vibrant arts programs that our students deserve. Myself, Molly, and some very shy members of our district arts team are available for any questions that you might have about the plan. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. DeAngelis. Don't forget your sign. But don't move. Any public comment on that?
No public comment.
Okay, this was an information item, but want to hear if any of my colleagues have anything they'd like to share this evening. Ms. Pritchett?
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. I'm looking forward to having it back. And I just want to say that, just real quick, that Ms. Molly's presentation, having her up here, makes me want to be a kid again and be in her class. That was the only thing I had to say. It just really made me want to just be in her classroom. That was all. I'm looking forward to having it back. That's the only thing I wanted to say.
I would just like to say that I visit Ms. Morrison's classroom all the time, and whenever I walk in, I do feel like a kid again. She is fantastic. Her students have such a, she has such a great rapport with her students. She's a model of an arts teacher for our district, yeah.
I'm really looking forward to supporting this. Thank you.
Next up, Ms. Villa.
Well, you know how I feel about this. This warms my heart tremendously. This is, art is just so important to me as a human being, as a parent, as a board member, and I know how hard you all have worked, because this is such a critical component, component to developing a whole child. Art is critical in this work. I mean, I still remember being in high school, learning the primary colors and learning with watercolor or chalk. So it's just, it, it takes over your whole life, and it gives you career paths that you didn't even know existed, and it's, it's a tangible field and career and just passion. So I cannot wait to go through this. I will definitely do that. I will reach out to you, but thank you so much for all the years that you guys have put into this. It matters. It, again, it's another item that impacting students forever in this district, so, thank you.
Mr. Singh?
I just want to hone in on one thing, which is you mentioned the PTA piece, and then I think in meeting, PTOs and PTAs, and what's the other one? PTGs, you know, so many of these. It's, it's really appalling that we, there's no way to talk about equity without acknowledging that the stronger your PTA, PTO, or PTG, the more likely you have an arts program in this district, and that is a problem. If we want to look at fixing outcomes for students, especially low-income students and students of color, those students are having the least access to these programs. And we have seen, I mean, I'm sure we've all read data about arts and Visual Arts and Performing Arts, giving students an opportunity to really release that pent-up energy and maybe some of the feelings that they have into art and expressing themselves in a way that doesn't get them into trouble. And oftentimes, you see that opportunity in those spaces. So I'm just excited for the next step, which is, I would love to see how much money we got out of Prop 28, because I was so excited about Prop 28, and then also how you all are hoping, and how you present that to us on how we're going to create that inclusive funding for our students and get that money out to all our students across the district, especially those who have never had arts programs. So, thank you.
Mr. Kayata?
First of all, thank you. Thank you to the people who are here and many others. First off, I'll just have to say, I've been reading this master plan several times since we saw it in the board packet last Friday. I'm going to tell you upfront, I'm not going to have any comments, because this has been the work since 2018. I don't have any more expertise than that. So this is really amazing, the amount of work that's gone into this, the detail, the planning, and the passion for delivering this for our students is really evident in the material, as well as what you've all done here today. Ms. Morrison, I was going to have this amazing, how happy I am about the arts, but you really, you took the words out of my mouth, because I can't say it any better than that. Similar to Member Singh, I was also struck by the slide and your mention that, you know, schools with strong PTAs, PTOs are the ones that have the arts, and that's, that's really sad. And a number-one thing we need to work on, in my opinion, is making sure that the arts are available to everyone. You know, in my personal life, in my kids' lives, the arts are something that helps often the students who need it the most, the students who are The students who are struggling, special ed students, students who are bullied, students who have problems communicating with their peers, all of a sudden, you know, they're painting, or they're up on stage, and it's like they're a different kid. If they have a home life that's not great, they can come in, they can do a play. And it's like, how did this happen with the kid who can't complete their homework because they're so frustrated, but then all of a sudden, they've memorized Hamlet, you know? Anyway, I said I wasn't going to go into it, but I just can't help myself. I just, actually, my, my son was just in a little performance this morning that I watched at his school, put on with NorCal School for the Arts, which is an amazing partnership we have. And I'm super excited that we can really commit to doing this meaningfully in our district as a long-term, permanent part of our education. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yeah, this is beautiful. And like member Kayata was saying, the, the idea that some schools have to decide between, you know, if PT, their PTO is strong, then they get arts. If not, or there's schools that are also deciding, you know, do I have a PE teacher or do I do an arts teacher? And that's actively happening through our district, right? And some, some people have chosen to do art teachers, but now their teachers are teaching PE class for the time. So this is really going to give opportunity throughout the district. And for me, I think that all of us here, I think everybody, if you look at it through the lens of art, everybody's an artist, we just paint on different canvases, if that makes sense. And so, and I, and I learned that saying actually from an art teacher in fourth grade at Bret Hart Elementary School. And so, and that, that has stuck with me throughout my whole life. Or you have this opportunity where teachers were giving opportunities to young kids to come in and do recording studios or writing. And so, the reason, the whole point of me being able to even get through like high school and loving hip-hop and writing is that there was a teacher who like said, hey, this is a way that you can express yourself. And it's, and it's been a beautiful journey to be able to do this. And so, the reason why I give good speeches now or do any of this stuff is because of the art education portion of it and be able to view it through the performance. And actually, your visual art stuff, that was very visual, what you did. You put everything in the thing. That was very beautiful. You should have kept it up there, actually. It would have like intensified the whole performance. So, but with that being said, we, we love this, and we're hopeful that this very impacts across our whole district. It impacts the students that don't have it, and it's, and even better for me because I always say, I wanted to really create a district that I needed when I was a student here, and you guys are actively making that happen, so I appreciate you.
Thank you. I, I echo a lot of those sentiments. I do want to address one thing that you said, which was the current model, this is, this was very confusing for many community members because they weren't familiar with this, so I want to make sure that everyone understands. The current model in our district and in many districts in the area is that the school itself chooses which type of prep the teachers have, and they have the option of a visual performing art, a librarian, or a PE teacher. And they have to choose one, and the district pays for that one. And most of the schools choose a PE teacher because PE is the only subject that has mandated minutes. It's in the ed code that we have the arts, but there's no minutes mandate on that. So as a result, most of the schools choose PE. They are, we do have a couple of district prep music art teachers. Actually, one of us is in the back, but she refused to come up. Yeah, that's right. And then what I've seen happen is we've had, so we've had some fantastic teachers in the district over the last four years who have retired, and then instead of replacing them with another music teacher, the school voted to have either a librarian or a PE teacher. So through attrition, we've actually lost more of the arts since I have been here than we've been able to gain. And that's because none of that really goes through centrally. It's all site-based. And oftentimes, it's dependent on, do they know somebody? Like, do they have somebody who would be good in that role? So that's sort of how the model is. So I just wanted to express that so everyone understands that that's the current model in our district.
And with, and with you, sir, that model is changing, and we're systemically impacting our students throughout our district, and we're appreciative of that.
Thank you. Ms. Segura?
Hi. I go to a smaller school site who does have a more limited option for arts on campus. So seeing the effort that you are putting into, to expanding those regions and those pools to schools across the entire district is fantastic. It's amazing, even with the smaller, like, selection that we do have on campus. I've seen how these arts have inspired and enacted passion within the students of our community, and I've seen how it has actively changed the courses and directions that their lives often take. So this amount of work that you've put in is incredible. This is just kind of a question for clarification for me. With your phase, one through two, you have the seven period a day to allow students opportunity for elective class. I don't have an issue, just for clarification. Would that be an inclusion of an extra hour onto the school day, or would be, would it be a shortening of other class periods to expand?
That's a great question. So that's a very much, so there are certain things in the, in the plan that are like, like, we need this, like, a lot of, like, we need teachers, like, basic part of the plan. Then there are other things that are sort of like, kind of like, nice-to-haves. And so, I have found, I've been a teacher for 18 years before I started, went into administration, and the schools that were able to expand to a seven-period day, often through, a school that I worked in in particular, you just use block scheduling. So they had six periods rotating throughout the day, and then they had, they tacked on an extra seventh period. In that case, it was a magnet school, so that extra hour was tacked on to the end of the day. So that's one possible model. The other, another possible model could be to shorten the periods by a few minutes and add on a seventh period. So there's, there are different types of models for that that exist, and I think each individual, especially at the high school, middle school level, would be able, should be able to kind of like choose that. But that's sort of like why that's in there, because it's, I mean, the reason it's in there is because with your four, you know, mandated core subjects, your PE, and then a foreign language, that's your six periods. Like, if, and if you want, and if you want to get into a good college, quote-unquote, you have to take that foreign language requirement, and then there's no room for the arts. As a teacher, that was frustrating for me because I would have kids as freshmen, and then, because there was a, no, you know, no requirement for, I think it was science freshman year, what I was teaching. And then I would lose them sophomore and junior year, and then senior year, they could come back. Well, you can't do that in orchestra. You can't start as a freshman, take a vacation for two years, and come back at the same level. It requires four years of the content. So that's, that's sort of the reason between that particular item. Yeah.
Thank you so much. And again, this is really amazing. I think it's going to be super, super impactful on so many students' lives.
Yeah, and, and I'm one of those students. So, I mean, I just, you know, I would be remiss if I did not point out that my mom is here. Mom, say hi.
Hi, Mom.
She came all the way from Massachusetts just to see this. And so she can vouch that I was one of those kids that sort of wandered aimlessly throughout middle school. We actually found my kindergarten and second-grade report cards. Apparently, I did not work well with others. And I talked a lot. But in high school, I found the art, we had a music wing in my high school, and that was my home for the next four years. So I'm absolutely one of those students that found the arts, and that took me to where I am now, so.
Thank you. I'm not even going to talk about myself and my lack of music and arts. And, and just by what you've all said, because I am going to talk about it, I'm almost here by mistake because I came in so late to music. And like, even though it did help broaden my perspective, like, there, there wasn't encouragement. It was like you just go to the class and like the social-emotional learning that we're talking about, and that transformative process that we can use music for is something that'll help, you know, a lot of students like me bloom. That's going to make a difference in their lives. So I'm really excited to get in and read this. So that was an informational item. I do appreciate your artwork in the slideshow as well.
Oh, thank you. I also, do you want to say, it's never too late to start?
Oh, no. I've been playing for a while, not old, but it's, it's never too late. I agree.
I, I actually, on Tuesday nights, I sing in a choir that has 111 adults in it, and maybe 20 of them are no music, and everyone sings, and it's amazing. So you don't have to be trained to be able to make music.
Agreed. I agree. Thank you. Okay, so that was an emotion, an emotional item as well as an informational item. Moving on to item 12-point, or, or, yeah, 12.0 communications. I want, 12.2, Madam Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Phillips. Good evening, everyone. We have many exciting new changes in programs taking place in 2024. But before I get to those, I wanted to single out some moments to close 2023 in our district that I'm very proud of. In the spirit of the giving season, I wanted to give recognition to Myrna Madrigal, the plant manager overseeing facilities at Isadora Cohen Elementary School. Myrna and the Ayala family have been graciously providing toys for all of the students at Isadora Cohen for the last two years now. Myrna shared that this act was her way of giving back, as she was thankful for the opportunity to serve the students at Isadora Cohen, and so it was her dream to give every student a present. I want to express my thanks to Myrna for her dedication to care for our students, and not just on that day, but each and every day. Also, over the holidays, I want to express my thanks to our incredible central kitchen and nutrition services team, including Diana Flores and Kelsey, for yet another successful holiday break food distribution during our winter break closure. More than 700 winter holiday pantry boxes were handed out that fed at least 1,700 people. Thank you to the Sacramento Food Bank and Family Services for their partnership on this food distribution, and also to the Sacramento Public Library for placing a free book in every box. Now, turning to 2024, I'd like to welcome our new students enrolling in our district. Enrollment has successfully opened for our kindergarten programs this week, and before our next board meeting, I'd like to remind our community that enrollment for our transitional kindergarten programs, TK, opens on February the 5th. Also, February the 5th, our open enrollment window opens for K-8 schools. Families can visit our School Mint School Finder page on our website to learn more about our schools and their offerings online. Also this week, notifications went out for our high school specialty programs for the families who completed their applications this fall, this past fall. Finally, for the upcoming, for this upcoming year, I would like to encourage our students who will be leaving our schools soon, that there are thousands of dollars in scholarship opportunities that will be going live tomorrow on the SCUSD website. Families of graduating seniors will receive a communication tomorrow to learn more about the application process. We hope these scholarship opportunities will make the dreams of our students much more attainable. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Item 12.2, President's Report. I have nothing to report out, other than the fact that this really, truly is a difficult job. And while I was trying to figure out where I was going, I realized that my instruction sheet had notes written on the back of it. And I kept looking, and now I know where it is. So I, I don't come into this position as president and running this particular board lightly, and I, I still will continue to ask of my colleagues of grace and, and truly embrace my, my drive for us all to share the chair. I will not be the only person sitting here this year, running this board. So everyone needs to know how the buttons work. Everyone needs to know how this electronic setup is, what you follow. Everyone's going to learn that this year. So periodically, you are going to see your board president sitting over there, and someone else is going to be here, because it is unfair to come here and not know how this works. Working on the fly and everybody looking at you is difficult, but I want to make sure that we are all comfortable. No matter where we go after this board, we will have a skill that we take with us on top of everything else. So, moving on to item 12.3, student member, Ms. Segura.
Okay. So, starting off just a bit heavy with it, I would like to take notes of some of the public comments given at the beginning of this meeting regarding the rights and respect of LGBTQ+ students within this district. I believe it was member Villa who noted a few meetings ago, and you correct me if I'm wrong, about the policy change in a district near our own regarding the disclosure of student name changes. With this in mind, along with the concerns brought forward from various community members throughout the district, we need to remember the active and continuous support for the safety and privacy of our students. Our student district has continuously preached an open and accepting community, and in order for this to reign true, accountability needs to be held to standard. While I am a West Campus student, I'm also up here to uplift the voices of youth across our whole district. The respect, privacy, and rights of LGBTQ+ students in this district need to be continuously protected, supported, and addressed, especially from the trusted adults on every campus and facility. For many students, these adults are the, their only safe space to go where they feel that their identity will not be compromised. This safe space needs to be upheld in order for us to truly affirm the values of this district. So keeping that in mind going forward, I'd appreciate it if we just continue to have this on our minds directly, not in the back of our minds, but just very forward-thinking with it, and keeping these in mind as well, as students continue to bring up these issues for years to come and within the recent ones that were brought up and ones that happen in the near future. So, on a more lighter note regarding the SAC, SAC did tap in with the Board of Communications, or the Board of Communications, a couple times about bringing you guys into the space, but we haven't gotten a response yet. So if you could keep that on your radar, that would be awesome. And then once we get a response from Board Communications, we should be able to have you guys attend the in-person meetings. So, yeah, that is it for me.
I will step in and ask that we move to 12.4, information sharing by board members by the time Gracie gets back, or she's not. So just press the red button and go.
I just wanted to thank Board Member Lily Miller for bringing that up. We've talked about this before, and I've said, not to call it out, but I'm going to call it out. We're not going to be Rockland as long as I'm on this board. I refuse to allow those kind of policies to take place in this district. So I appreciate her as a student board member, bringing this to light and making sure that the adults in the room hear from the students of what they expect of us as board members. So, thank you.
Okay, and just to kind of echo Board Member Villa and, and some of the comments we had earlier from our, our students, I think that last year, the board had, has done some pretty monumentous actions in forward to uplift our trans and LGBTQIA students through two resolutions that reaffirmed our stance on the subject, that we do stand firmly behind our students, and any bias or hate towards students that identify in those ways is not tolerated. And, and that is very clear. And I would like for maybe our, our students also to get that information as well. I know that, I don't know who oversees or helps out with you guys' group, but to get that information and know that the board is standing behind, and we're there with you guys.
Any more information sharing from board members? Mr. Kayata?
So we had a little time, I guess, all of us board members, over the break, when things were a little slow here with the duties of a board member, to kind of consider what the past year has been. And I found myself just realizing it's been six months that since Lisa Allen has become our interim superintendent, and I just wanted to thank you publicly for all the work you've done. I know it would be easy for the board to claim credit for changing the culture of the district, but I think you truly have been the one who's done it. Random people are showing up, talking to me at school sites, in the grocery store, hey, who's the new superintendent? It feels so great here. Everything feels amazing. Just wanted to thank you, and thank my board colleagues as well, because, I mean, we have been part of it. Really, it just feels like a different district now, and I'm really excited about the work we're going to do in 2024. I'd like to think of it in calendar years in some ways, not necessarily just school years. And then as we started this year, just wanted to give a shout-out to And then as we started this year, just wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Williams, AP Gov. Class at Kennedy for hosting me. This is my second time going there to hear their, their presentations for civics projects, and just the passion that those students put into it. I, I learned a lot, and I'm taking it with me. Lisa Allen can attest that I've already sent her several flurries of emails over issues that the kids raised. Because, you know, we're not, I, I think someone earlier said, I can't remember who, you know, we're not walking these campuses every day. We don't see it, maybe with our kids, so I'm going to see what's happening in third grade and first grade, but I don't know everything. So it's really important to me to hear the student voice, and just really appreciate the kids for letting me listen in, and really looking forward to the next year.
Thank you, Mr. Caata. Any, no, no, oh, sorry, Mr. Singh.
Thank you. I echo that sentiment. I like saying that. For our superintendent. And, and also what Jamie and Chinua brought up, you know, if there's a way to, to let the student body know what, what the board has done and will continue to do, I think that's really important. And to move on, I think, just a couple of things real quick. I had a, a teacher at Miwok Middle School reach out and ask about some funding to send some students to Boston, so I just want to kind of put it out there that, you know, we don't have a huge fund, but our discretionary funds can be used to support things like this. So just happy to, to provide 1,500 bucks to that, that classroom and, and help send some students out to Boston. I think it's for, it's for their history class. I'm assuming they're going to go check out the Bay and learn about the Boston Tea Party? I'm not sure what they're doing in Boston, but, you know. The point is, it's an opportunity for students, and oftentimes, some of those students don't get the opportunity that their colleagues may get, and we're just discussing that right now with the arts presentation, that there shouldn't be anybody left behind simply because they can't afford to go on a trip that their other, that their colleagues could possibly pay for on their own. I think the other thing I want to mention is just how impactful the winter break was. I think there is just a lot of opportunities that I was able to connect with community. I was able to go through the South Side with, with Chinua, and we got to hang out with Santa Claus on the South Side of Sacramento, and it was, it was a great experience, because I think that's where we see our kids, we see our community, we see our family members and folks that we really connect with. And there is that energy, that positive vibe about, not what we're doing necessarily up here, but what all of you are doing, our teachers, administrators, all of you who work at SCUSD, folks are seeing the difference, so we just appreciate all of you for what you do. And lastly, I think, as I've said, I will continue to say it, we are 100-plus days into the conflict in the Middle East, and I will continue to state that we need peace in the Middle East, and I hope that the folks who can hear or even pay attention to us know that we will continue to push for a ceasefire, continuously support any efforts to bring peace, and I hope that our children are able to see a more bright, a safe future. I know that there are literally no schools, no hospitals left in that region, and I'm hoping that our kids here can continue to see that we are doing everything we can to keep them safe. But this is a reality that they're facing, and I look back to when I was a child, and I had to see the images of 9/11 on TV and what that impact left on me. I just really hope that we're able to talk to our children, our students, about what type of lasting impact this is going to have on them, so just keeping them in mind. So that's it.
Thank you.
I would like to pull one item. I know. I also want to get out by nine. Oh, 13.1L.
President Phillips, can you turn your microphone on, please?
Do I got to say that whole 13.1L again? Okay, we know which one we're pulling. So it was moved by Christina Pritchett, and I will second to approve the consent agenda minus the removal of 13.1, 13.1L. Pull that to a vote. Student preferential?
Aye.
Member Caata?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Thank you. Passes. Was there any, oh, sorry, we got a member up ready to speak. Mr. Caia, are you ready?
I'm ready. So I had just four questions about this item. This relates to the developer fees that we collect to basically help us fund our district operations and construction. And I think it's just, you know, given how important this is for our ability to function and to continue serving the city of Sacramento, just wanted to kind of publicly ask a couple of questions I've been asking over the past year, but also just a couple of new ones based on this particular item. And not looking for detailed information, I believe there's plans to kind of bring more of this back in the future, but I just wanted to get this out there. So first question, I noticed that we're collecting these fees for the rail yards area. We're getting mitigation fees instead of impact fees. And I also noticed that for delta shores in particular, we're not collecting special fees, we're collecting the standard fees. Can you provide some background on the rail yards fees and how they'll be used, as well as plans for accommodating students in delta shores and the nearby Stone Beetland neighborhoods?
Yeah, thank you. So there is an agreement with the rail yards development to build an elementary K-6 site once they have a projection of 300 students coming from that development five years out. After that, there is a language in there to potentially build a second K-6 school if another 350 students are generated. That is, does that answer your question?
Yeah, so that was for the rail yards, but what is, what are the plans for delta shores and Stone Beetland?
Yeah, so the delta shores developer fees will also be used to address school needs within that area. Those school sites are, for Stone Beetland would be Susan B. Anthony, and for Delta Shores would be John Still. And so those development fees that receive from there will be used to mitigate the impact of, of that development on those school sites.
So are there plans to build an elementary school in delta shores? I know in the plans the developer has with the city that there is dedicated space for that, and there's specific transportation plans, you know, to get kids' safety to this school. But if we're not collecting extra fees to do that, you know, is there a funding source for that, or are we planning on building a school there?
We're not currently planning on building a school for delta shores at this time. There are, again, development fees coming in from that area, but they're, they're nowhere near what is needed to build a new school.
So if that community, you know, had a need for a school or wanted a school, are they looking at like a Melrose? I mean, if we're not collecting developer impact fees now, it's not equitable for us to subsidize it with the rest of the city?
I think that is a discussion that we may have to bring up at another time.
Thank you. Like I said, I didn't think you'd have all the answers. Sorry, did, oh.
I answered a question.
Okay. So one thing in particular that I noticed with delta shores, because I've been over there several times, well, many times, I've been there since it's been constructed, if you buy one of these new houses that's coming up in delta shores, and you're going to go to John Still, the only way to get there until the city extends 24th Street down is to either go over the freeway and up Freeport, or go on the freeway, it's four miles, no matter what you're doing, and it's not walkable at all. Do we have any plans to help those kids get to school, like elementary school in particular?
So we follow board policy when it comes to transportation supports to our students. And so I, I know within that policy, there are different stipulations to assist as needed.
Okay, thanks, Owen. Mostly, I'm asking these questions just to kind of, because these are questions that I'm thinking are going to come up from a community when they're, hey, we're in the school district, but how do we go to school? And then the last issue is just, these three new areas that I mentioned, they're all on the edge of our district. I mean, they're infill communities, but they're on the edge of Sac City Unified. Are we doing anything to kind of make sure that we establish these communities as part of our Sac City family? You know, I'm really worried about, a lot of families start moving in, and the initial couple of years, you know, kids in the rail yards start going to Natomas, kids in delta shores start going to Elk Grove, and next thing you know, we've kind of lost these communities forever. So is there anything we can do to kind of, maybe extra outreach, or, you know, maybe even having some sort of, I would say, like, kind of extra steps, if you're trying to get an inter-district transfer, that we will reach out and kind of make sure that you're aware of the schools that you should be attending?
Yeah, I, I think maybe that question is best for the Communications Department or Enrollment Center, but I do know that, that we do share a lot of fun and exciting information with our families to, to keep them excited and interested in our schools as well. So I would imagine that's definitely part of the, the process.
All right, thank you, and thank you from my board colleagues for indulging that. I, you know, these are conversations that don't pop up every day, but every day I drive over to get some in and out, and I see a new house over in delta shores, and I'm like, where are these kids? No, I don't go there every day, I'm saying every time I go. Sorry. That, I would be much fatter than I am now. Okay, anyway, thank you. That's a worse comment to end on.
Thank you, Mr. Caata.
I'll ask my question.
So do we have a motion? Thank you, Ms. Pritchett. Second. Mr. Singh, second. We'll put that to a roll call. Prefer, a student preferential?
Aye.
Member Caata? Member Phillips?
Aye.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Singh?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
It passed.
Thank you. Item 14.0, Business and Financial Information Reports have been received. Item 15.0, Future Board Meetings, Dates and Locations, February 1, 2024, 5:00 PM, closed session. 6:30 open session here at Cerna Center, 5735 47th Avenue, in the Community Room. And February 15, 2024, 5:00 PM, closed session. 6:30 PM, open session, Cerna Center, 5735 47th Avenue, Community Room. I'm reading those slowly and deliberately, because that's how slow I process dates, times, and addresses, colleagues. So next time we, we start talking about dates and times and places, there really is a reason why I go that slow. Anyway. 16.0, we are on adjournment. Motion? Ms. Pritchett, motions. Second, Ms. Phillips. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.